Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 10th zoning board hearing. For board members that aren't familiar, I've just got notified that we have a new alternate position that's been filled. Her name is Ruth McDade. And we welcome her to board. I did call her this afternoon and left her a message. So I haven't met her yet, but I didn't know if she was going to get here tonight, whether she was sworn in or not. So I just wanted to welcome her to the board. And then we'll get going. So the first thing on the agenda, we have the minutes from the May 22nd hearing. Board members have an opportunity to review those. If so, I'll make a motion. There's a motion by John Nostriani. Do I have a second?
Second.
Two seconds. I'll take Mark because he was closer to me. With that, all those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Pass that down. Okay. I will announce the second hearing. So this is on, you gave me, oh, the June 12th. Hold on. We also have the minutes from the meetings, minute meetings of June 12th. Do I have a motion to accept those as written?
Oh, yeah.
Motion made.
Motion by Bob. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Okay. Pass this one down for. Okay, this is going to be on the continued application of Jennifer Landry, 51 Madden Ave, Milford, for a variance relief from Sections 2.4 and 2.5 of the zoning bylaws as the provisions relate to a 15,664 square foot more or less parcel of land known and numbered as 51 Madden Ave. The variance relief is sought in order to erect a 28 by 36 foot garage to the rear of the property closer to the real lot line than otherwise is permitted. And the proposed garage will have one room over it and not contain nor be utilized as an accessory dwelling unit. This is a continuation from the last hearing. I will update you just so that we have, let's go to the planning board. The planning board reviewed this petition at their scheduled meeting on 6/3. They have made a motion favorable recommendation subject to no sewer and water connection to the garage. And with that, I will turn it over to Attorney Bertinazzi. Go ahead, Mr. Bertinazzi, kind of fill us in a little bit.
It was a new plan that had been delivered. Do you gentlemen have that for your records?
No.
Is that it?
Dave, it's the one in your hand.
Yes, I'm sorry. Take that back.
Copy to everybody.
Oh, good. One, two, three, four, and one.
So obviously after the hearing last time, Ms. Landry left the review. Certainly, she was very concerned about the whole issue of access via the driveway and the abutting land order. And it's a very strange situation. The property was originally constructed with a garage facing in the direction of that land, and driveway was constructed on that land, and it has always been used as access to this house and the house on the other side. But I reviewed the records, maintained the district deed, and I was able to find a name to the owners of either of these properties across that central parcel. So obviously, Ms. Landry became very concerned about this, and wanted to leave it to the winds of others, be it the present owner or some successor in interest down the line. So she has revised, and she didn't, at this point, want to go the whole route of some kind of an adverse possession type claim with the cost, aggravation, and time involved in doing that. So there's a revised proposal by which she proposes to construct a driveway entirely on her parcel, though that will increase the cost of her project.
Could you do me a favor, Attorney Bertinazzi?
Certainly.
And point that out on the plan for the board members?
It runs right along the northerly boundary line of her parcel.
Okay.
From Madden Ave to the patrol's garage area. Going to the sort of tightness now and the resulting turning radiuses, she still would like to construct the garage as it was originally proposed to make it easier to drive into and out of that garage via the newly constructed driveway. Again, it's a small intrusion into the rear yard setback, smaller than what is presently occupied by shed bins to be raised under the proposal. With that said, if the board has any questions or concerns, we are more than happy to try to address that.
John, can I see that? This one didn't have the driveway on it. That's why I asked him to point it out. Okay.
What one did I drive? Does it matter? No, he's asked a question.
No, it has.
That's okay, but I'm just wondering. It looks like it's very long.
I don't see a lip on it, but the lot line is 150 front to back.
Yeah, somewhere, it could be 75, 85 feet. Be able to turn right into the angle of that garage, that angle could spin right in that way.
So you know, I'm trying to do a five-point turn into your garage.
You put it the other way, you can't get in there.
It'd be harder.
Anybody else care to be heard on this application? Sir?
Lou Anarola.
Hi, Lou.
Had a couple of questions, one of which was kind of interesting. You said that planning board, it indicated that no sewer hookup could be made on this property?
To the garage.
To the garage. But under the AUD state regulations, I'm not sure that that can be stopped.
It doesn't matter because she's not going for an ADU.
No, no, she might not, but someone else might.
They could.
But what I'm just trying to say is...
Anybody on that street can do an ADU.
I know, but I don't, I didn't think that the planning board could say that you could not hook up.
Well, that's what their recommendation is at this point in time.
Okay. I'll just check that with the stake because it seems like conflict.
Well, I don't think it's a conflict. It's a comment from the planning board. That's what it was because they're reflecting a garage, and at this point in time, there's no ADU that's being applied for. So at this point in time, they're recommending no connection to water and sewer to the garage.
Right, but an ADU...
Frankly, I think water should be allowed in case they want to have a water spigot or something like that in the garage.
Yeah, well, that would be my thinking too, but you know, I think at any point in time in the future, an ADU, that could be converted into an ADU unit.
They would have to comply at that point. They still have to conform to the guidelines.
At that part, if it were approved, then they could get water and sewer, but if it wasn't approved...
Right, exactly.
It's sound that's non-conformant.
Right. Quick question. Would the applicant, well, would the board condition the fact that the driveway should be constructed prior to the building be constructed? And let me explain why. It impacts the use of my property during the construction process, which could be kind of destructive. So if the driveway is in first, you know, I would tend to be more agreeable to this versus leaving it the way it is where trucks are whatever, unless I monitor it, you know, could go in there and really tear up my property. So I would...
Basically, you're saying you don't want to use construction equipment on your driveway in a nutshell.
I would like, I would like to condition that the driveway go in first.
I'm not sure I'm willing to do that because as far as I'm concerned, this party and this responsible party is doing the right thing. As far as that driveway is concerned, it's impacting another person too. And I struggled with this the last hearing, specifically when you didn't even know you owned it. And then when we finally realized that you owned it, things changed in your attitude that you didn't want the garage being done.
Well, it's...
Specifically, when you said to me, it's a decrease of value of your property, which it's not. You've got wetlands right in back of there.
Once again, we don't, we don't know that...
It's here.
I mean, there...
This is the Mass GIS wetlands map.
Right, and it ought to confirm it.
These don't go away.
And it ought to confirm it, okay?
You're an engineer.
You have to have an engineering survey of it.
Correct.
So you could not tell me right now, okay, that that is accurate. You could say it's a general idea, but you can't say that it's accurate.
We have wetlands delineated for purposes of the conservation commission on this plan if the board is interested in seeing them.
I'd like to see that, yeah.
But my point is...
Delineation, close or accurate.
It's just what we...
Close to this one?
It's just, I don't know, it's just what we have done from our property.
Yeah, this is what...
We didn't do the whole...
Yeah, the engineering firm has this capability, right.
Why wouldn't, why do you feel that the, it would be a hardship on the individual to put the driveway in prior to the construction of the building?
How long has, how long has this road been here? How long has it been here?
I have no idea, but I can tell you that...
Twenty years, maybe?
I can tell you that it's been plowed by the town on a regular basis.
Never. I pay for it to be plowed.
How long have you...
Twenty-five years.
Can I just step in really quick? During construction, you never put a driveway in first because it gets damaged during construction. So it's usually the last thing. So chronologically, it's a bad idea. Second of all, nobody has the right to use her driveway while you're doing your construction. They don't have the right.
But it forces me into a position where I have to defend that property from the standpoint of, you know, perhaps limiting use of it and then forcing the issue with...
You always have to defend the property during construction.
Forcing, forcing the issue with, you know, a court case.
That's not unique in construction. You always have to defend your land. That's why you have stakes. That's why the engineers come out.
And I'd be happy to do that, okay, but it's going to, once again, delay her situation for sure. I think it'd be a lot easier if you allow that to construction, even if it's a base, some way to guarantee that that is going in fact to be a driveway. Is there any way you can guarantee that or ensure, ensure that?
You're worried that she's never going to build the driveway.
Yes, exactly.
We're here to vote on relief that is seeking concerning the garage. This particular family has gone through hell over the years and specifically developed a company that I think this community should be proud of in servicing the disabled and special needs children. If she needs a garage to handle her own children to make it easier for her own disability of their children, I'm not going to fight that. It's up to you if you want to block that road and be that way. That's going to be totally up to you, but you're also affecting the person that's next door, and that's going to be another financial hardship. So this whole situation is creating financial hardships on two, not one.
Not if I, not if I continue to let that person do that.
That's your call.
Exactly. And I would do the same thing with these people as well, okay, if it wasn't for that, the construction of that building.
Are you asking, sir, that she ensures your property while constructions take place using your asphalt?
I would like to have the driveway, some assurances that the driveway is going to go in.
Well, couldn't you...
What about any damage to your driveway while she's construction?
Developing it substantially similar to what showed in the revised plan?
Yeah, it's just going to be, it's going to be built according to plan.
I just don't want that to be destructive.
Yeah.
The driveway has to be constructed. So we have no objection to this board allowing the variance subject to the installation of a driveway substantially similar to shown on the revised plan.
That's, that's all going to be part of it, yeah, because you're not going to certainly build a garage without a driveway. We're going to make sure of that. We're going to make sure that driveway gets installed.
If that's the condition, then you can guarantee that it will in fact be used, and then the use of my property, okay, will eventually cease by that party. We can't guarantee that.
We don't know if she has the right to use it. That's something you have to battle out in court.
I understand. I understand. It just, if the driveway goes in, chances are she's going to use it. But we're not, we're not going to guarantee it.
Well, frankly, the town has not been maintaining this for how many years? Twenty-five, thirty years?
Forty.
So you assume this cost of plumbing is...
Twenty-five years.
For both your neighbors?
Yes.
So you paid for the other side too, more or less?
I do it all, and my husband, when he was alive, he still paid.
God bless you. God bless you.
If I just may make a comment, I think it's in your best interest to put the driveway in, stay off his driveway because if something happens, you're going to be at court. That's my personal opinion. If I were you, put the driveway in first, whether or not this board says you have to, and just use that to build, to construct this unit, and stay off his property.
I'm not, I'm not going to recommend, a recommendation to have the driveway installed before construction. That is ludicrous. That is not the way it's done.
Oh, no, I'm fine with that. I'm just saying, I just made a comment.
But we will have a condition that the driveway gets completed according to the plan.
We have no objections to that.
Just a comment.
Is there a timeframe?
Anything?
Safe.
David, would you put a timeframe on that?
There's building code that...
Well, it's going to coordinate into a, to the occupancy of the garage.
So within...
So if she can get this done before the winter, I don't think she's going to want to be...
So it's within the, within the construction period of the garage itself, so...
Yeah, it'll be, it'll just be focused...
I'm fine with that.
...focused based on the occupancy of the garage.
Yeah, I'm fine.
It'll be in there that the driveway needs to be completed upon occupancy. That's fine, yeah. Anybody else? Okay, so the recommendation, I'll put it out here. The recommendation would be that the, that the garage that's proposed, along with the proposed expansion of the driveway, would be approved as submitted, and that the driveway to be, to be complete with at least a base coat shortly after occupancy permit has been issued for the garage.
I would say unless she has a legal right to use it.
Unless she has a legal right to answer on...
Well, you don't want to, let me interject. You don't want to address this other driveway.
The legal stuff I don't want to address because that's something that they can work out, but if we put it in the legal decision, then they opened up Pandora's box and stop everything.
You're going to require that there be a driveway, that this driveway be established and this driveway be utilized. What they do on the other, you can't really get involved in that.
That's right. But she wouldn't put this new driveway in if in the interim, they decided to hash it out in court, and then she has a legal right to actually access it.
Well, you're going to put a condition in there, so you've got to put this driveway in. So whatever else happens, you've got to put this driveway in, whatever fights they have, hopefully none, but they've got to put the driveway in. It's going to be a condition you're going to put on it, whether or not she ever can use. The other one, again, your board can't address that.
But then would we force her to put that driveway in if, if in the interim, she finds out that she can actually legally use the other one?
Yes, she could come in for a modification, sure, but you're going to put the condition in.
That's a simple theory.
She plans on getting going, though. We're going to, she's going to get this...
I'm putting in my own driveway.
Okay.
It's totally fine.
Okay, so there's a motion to approve the plan as submitted. In addition to that, the driveway, the proposed driveway that's currently expanded on the new plan, that will be complete, completed at least to the base level of asphalt right around the timeframe of the occupancy permit being issued, within 30 days of the occupancy permit being issued, and of course, weather conditions are going to impact no matter what. So that's the, those are the two motions. I need a motion of that. So we have a motion to approve it as submitted upon the new plan that was submitted.
Second.
And there's a second by Mark on that particular motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. On the second motion concerning the driveway expansion area would be completed from at least a minimum of a base asphalt coat within 30 days of the permit being issued, occupancy permit being issued for the garage. Is there a motion? Motion by John, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. All those in favor? Opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you, everyone, for cooperating. We appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm signing.
Well, now, you want to sign the plan with the driveway on it?
That's the wetlands one.
That's the wetlands.
Yeah, you can tell this tape.
You want to sign, you want to sign that?
The driveway one, there it is.
Right in.
I didn't realize that. Do you have anything to say?
It seems like it's going down, just like Madden Ave is down.
So they're here in support of it, but they just go where you say?
No, because it's...
It's wise, very wise.
Oh, don't worry about it. I'll get back to you.
Hopefully, I don't have any speaking roles.
See you later.
Jerry, just so you know, I made it clear in the video notes, but I put in here weather permitting in case they end up getting bad weather.
Yep, inevitably, they will probably.
Yeah, they probably will. Okay. Thank God, it's cold down here. Well, sir, I'm putting both of these in.
Isn't there, is this the one for City Mayor? So who's the other? Who's the other one? Were they here? Corey Drive L. O. too, sure.
Okay, Corey Drive, is this Corey Drive?
Corey Drive, right now, sorry.
Corey Drive's first, you guys are right after.
Jump the gun. Jump the gun.
Look at the switch.
John?
Yes, John.
Hi, John. Chigley, how are you?
Dave, oh, yeah, it's been a long time.
You want to take questions today? You want to get ahold of your attorney?
Joe, that's terrific, thank you.
Regretfully.
Do we really have to?
Probably sunburn.
Is he off the golf course yet?
Yeah, exactly.
Is he? Okay, yeah, better about now, huh?
Just about now.
All right, first of all, before I get started, are there any board members have any conflict with this?
Well, good.
Okay. Here, I'll read the announcement as I get Phil on the phone.
I'm going to start the hearing, so I'm going to read it in, and then you can listen on and we'll let you know when it's ready to roll, all right? Thank you for your opportunity, I appreciate it.
Okay, this is on the application of Corey Drive Land LLC, 5 Cromwell Road, Suite 1A, Natick, for a special permit relief in relation to a 323,000 plus or minus square foot more or less parcel of land located off Fortune Boulevard in Milford, known and numbered as 130 Corey Drive, and shown on the Cessna sheet 32, Block 98, Lot 12. The special permit relief is sought pursuant to 2.3 of the zoning bylaws in order to permit the premises to be used for motor vehicle sales, rental, and more specifically for the rental of commercial motor vehicles. In the applica, is there an application here? I don't see it. No, here it is. There it is. I got it. I'll just briefly paraphrase this because Joe will probably go over it anyways. So the applicant is looking to utilize motor vehicle, both sales and rentals used. The application is specifically for the rental of a commercial motor vehicle. The use described here is allowed by a, by way of a special permit through the ZBA. Concerning the, the special permit sought is in harmony with the general purpose and bylaws of the intent of the zoning bylaws, the applicant states leasing rental of used motor vehicles is allowed by way of special permit in the industrial districts. The fact that the above reference use is allowed multiple zoning districts supports the applicant's position that the use of the site for the rental commercial vehicles is in harmony, harmony with the purpose and the intent of the general bylaws. Concerning the site would not create undue traffic or congestion on that particular question, including pedestrian safety, the applicant states that the site will be used to rent refrigerated trailers to various purveyors of frozen foods. The site operates with only part-time employees who appear if and when needed to assist customers in selecting the proper vehicle. There is no showroom, and the facility is not open to the public. All rentals are arranged in advance through the reservation, through the reservation system. Concerning the question, the proposed use will not cause harm to the neighborhood or create nuisance or hazards affecting the health, safety, and welfare of the public. The applicant states that the vehicles stored and rented on the site are empty. There is no sound that emanates from any of the vehicles, and there's no mechanically maintained, and there are no fuel tanks, fuel, or any other type of activity that's going to be on the site. With that, it has gone through to the planning board, and the planning board heard this at their June 17th meeting, recommends a favorable, recommends the following, and has made a favorable recommendation down plan a letter indicates, and I will paraphrase, the applicant is requesting a special permit for the rental of commercial motor vehicles. Zoning bylaw provides such uses as a ZBA special permit in the IB zoning district. The legal address of the subject parcel, as I indicated before, map 32, Block 98, Lot 12, and it's 120 Corey Drive. Specifically, the proposal is for the leasing and rental of refrigerated trailers to various purveyors of frozen foods. The trailers will be empty while on the property, and only part-time employees will be utilized on an ad needed basis. The facility will not be open to the public, and all rentals are to be done remotely. All the relevant zoning requirements appear to be met, and therefore, they do recommend a favorable report be sent off to this board. However, the site plan approval from the planning board will be required if the permit is granted. So with that, Mr. Antonellis, the telephone is yours.
Well, thank you. I'm only disappointed that I'm not on Zoom so that I can see everybody. My best to everyone sitting there. John Crossen, who's the principal of the applicant, which is Corey Drive LLC, is, is with you tonight. And when John purchased the property, when this entity purchased the property, the business was already existence there. This is a unique, unique operation. It deals with one thing and one thing only, and that is refrigerated trailers that are used in the food industry and are rented from PLM by any variety of supermarkets, Market Basket, Stock and Shop.
Believe it's...
All these, all of them are at some time or another in need of, of an extra refrigerated trailer, and the place to get them is 130 Corey Drive, Milford, from PLM Fleet Boston. The operation has been in existence for quite some time. Again, it predates the owner. We believe that it originated originally out of the moving storage businesses that frequented and were part of the site when, when Fafford developed the area. As you know, we also have the Caterpillar dealership in this area. Again, another unique aspect of this is this particular parcel is within a condominium all general master deed situation so that our abudders are in fact cooperative owners or co-owners of the underlying land along with us. We did not anticipate that we would have any objection from the abudders. We are perhaps the least intense business on the Corey Drive property. Again, as we stated in the application, you have infrequent visits to the property, and they are solely for the purpose of picking up these trailers, which are left on site, as we said, empty. The refrigeration is shut off while they're there. There is nothing much that goes forward on the property. And again, I think that we're clearly in harmony with the, with the bylaw. One of the questions that someone might ask is, you know, are trailers a vehicle? And my research in the Milford bylaw and the definition of vehicles in Milford, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, comport with the general definition of a vehicle in Blackshaw dictionary, which basically is any type of apparatus on wheels that transports materials, goods, or persons over a highway. And that is exactly what's going on here. It is a vehicle of structure on wheels that is moved along the highways for the purpose of bringing frozen foods to supermarkets from general distributors. So we don't anticipate the need for any lighting. Again, as we said, we're not, we're not a place that's frequented by customers. Anybody that comes knows the area. The trailers are hitched to the... The trailers are hitched to the tractors under the supervision of an employee that will be there once the arrangements are made. I don't know if there's anything else that I can offer to the board in that light, but both John and I are here to answer any questions that any of the board members or anyone in the public might have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Antonellis. I'll start with the board members. Any board members have any comments?
What is that one-story masonry building shown on the plot plan?
Well, that's not the site. This is the site.
Yeah, I don't think it does.
Okay, no, I know, but I'm just curious. What is that?
That's where you go. This here is probably the gym, right? Yeah, across the park, yeah, across the park lot is the gym.
Okay.
Yeah. That's where it is. This is where the generators used to be, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm familiar with it, yeah.
I'm trying to become familiar with it.
Yeah, when you come down from the cross from Target, you come in that way, and you come down, the gym is here.
That's on the left. Right.
Off in the corner.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
And did he mention that the generators don't run?
They don't run.
Yeah, they don't.
No refrigeration?
No.
There are no generators running because there's nothing in those vehicles when they're there.
Right, once the truck comes in and picks up the trailer, everything gets activated from that point, right?
Correct.
That's correct, and they come back empty. That's a requirement of the company.
Right, okay.
You don't start them up before the rentals picked up, do you?
No.
And when they dropped off, they turned off?
Correct, as soon as they disconnect.
Just drop in the trailer.
As soon as they disconnect.
I'm more curious logistically how you get those trailers out of there. I mean, if you need to get one that's--
Rack them, pack them, and stack them.
Does it really matter? I guess they just grab whatever they--
They grab whatever they need and they try and be smart about the way they store them.
So they're interchangeable? They're not?
Yeah, I mean, they're a huge company, PLM, so they do this all over the country.
They all the same size trailer?
Yeah, pretty much, pretty much the same.
Anybody else care to be heard on this one? If not, I'll take a motion for approval as submitted. Motion by John as submitted. You have a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, John, appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the board, appreciate it. Thank you for the courtesy of allowing me to call in.
Yeah, just stay where you are. You're not wanted up here.
Joe, head him straight, Joe.
Understood.
Hope you stay healthy. Stay healthy, Joe. Okay.
Good night.
Oh, really? Somebody left their phone?
Boy.
Sitting on the chair over there.
Where was it sitting?
On the second row.
It's probably either of them.
It's going to be either of them, yeah.
He left flustered.
Most people would have been back a long time ago.
Exactly.
He's got to go to Dennis, so he's going to have a long disappointed ride.
Oh, yeah, you can.
No.
We once had a guy, we go into executive session with the selectmen, and okay, he's got to leave, he doesn't like it. So he leaves his phone behind, on, recording.
Oh, I guess I know what that is.
Yeah, I have to tell you what it is, but yeah, it was a nice little move. It didn't work.
Okay.
So what do you rise up to tonight?
Who's my traffic guy?
Not here tonight.
Okay. We haven't been yelling, have we?
I know.
Okay, this is on the continued application of the limited-ebitda affiliate WP East Acquisitions, Hartwell Place, Third Floor, Suite 300, Lexington, to the comprehensive permit concerning General Chapter 40B in relation to a 7.88 parcel of land, more or less, located on the Eastley side of East Main Street, known and numbered as 190 Main Street. The petition proposes to develop and construct 200 residential complexes and four-four-story residential buildings and related structures, which buildings will include a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. The development will contain the requisite number of low to moderate incomes. Project eligibility letter was issued on September 5th of 2024. So with that, we will turn the floor over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good to see you again. So we were here last month introducing the project to the board for the first time. We went through a presentation of the project, talked a lot about traffic, and obviously we went through the site plan in some detail. We also discussed the peer reviews that had happened prior to that meeting with Stormwater and Civil and Traffic as well, understanding there's going to be more to discuss on Traffic. We left that meeting with a couple, in our minds, tasks for us. One was three meetings, one with the Sewer Department, one with the Water Department, and one with the Fire Department. All three of those meetings have happened since that meeting. Paul Matos from Allen &amp; Major here with me tonight is going to go through the outcomes of those meetings. And then second, and I think most importantly, we're getting out ahead of the concerns that the board had on parking ratio last time. And we're going to introduce a new revised version of the site plan that has less units and more parking. I know we didn't specifically get asked to do that coming out of that meeting, but obviously it was a major part of the discussion, so we're going to get ahead of that. So I guess with that, I'm going to have Paul speak to the meetings that he had, and then two of us will discuss the new plan. Open up the board for discussion.
Good evening, Paul Matos with Allen &amp; Major Associates with the civil engineers for the project. We had a meeting with the Fire Department, and the Fire Department was kind of in favor of the project. He was on board with the stuff that we're proposing. After the meeting, we do have some minor revisions that we need to make to the plan. The Fire Department was asking us to provide a cross-section of the front building here as it relates to Main Street and the grading that we have shown on the plan. So we're going to be preparing that cross-section slash profile for them to evaluate how his trucks are to be able to handle a fire situation with that building. Another situation that he wanted us to provide was we provide a couple of diagrams that show if the fire truck is parked here, what are the distances to get from the fire truck to the back of this building? And the same thing with the fire trucks parked here, what are the distances to meet the code?
Yeah, that was my concern too.
To meet the code, which is 250 feet from a parked vehicle, to get to the back of the building from either direction. So we're going to prepare those diagrams for them. And then we have to make some minor tweaks to the payment plan that was provided with how to fix some dimensions on the fire truck that we use compared to what he has on staff and stuff. So we just have to do that and make some minor revisions to the path that comes through here. So overall, it was a good meeting with the Fire Department. Then the second meeting we had--
Real quick, Paul, I'm sorry. And I think that he left it at, when we make the plan revisions, he'll review again and send a letter to the board.
And the second meeting we had was with the Water Department, again, everything with the Water Department as well. We did get a letter from their water consultant that put our project into the model for the town. And on the letter, they basically provided a statement saying that we really didn't have an impact on the water system itself as it related to pressures and the demand and stuff like that for this project. The Water Department--
Ran out of water, just so you know.
Ran out of water?
Yeah. It rained the last day, so. That's why these projects are a big deal, because they consume a crap load of water, and water is not guaranteed. The tank was almost empty up there up on Highland Street, so everybody had to conserve the water. So this has always been a problem through all of them.
Did the board receive the letter from Tatum Howard?
I'd have to look.
What's the date on it?
What's that dated?
June 27.
Yeah, I don't think we haven't received it yet.
Which is a sign.
I don't see any updated letter.
No, this is on Water.
Okay. Yeah, we haven't seen it. Yeah, no, we haven't got it yet.
Okay.
So the Water Department did have some comments that they wanted to see some minor revisions to the plan for the buildings. We had a one-and-a-half-inch service to the buildings. He kind of wanted a minimum of two inches. And I told him, you know, again, they haven't been sized by our plumbing engineers yet, because again, that's a little further down the--
Pretty standard for something like this.
Yeah, so it's a little further down the road, so we're going to modify the plans.
What do you think a one-and-a-half inch was going to do it?
I can't answer that question. It was what was shown on the plans. I'm not sure if that was what was on the architectural plans, calling for a one-and-a-half inch. So we kind of matched that, but again, we'll revise the plans to meet whatever the plumbing engineers say, and the Water Department's going to be okay with that. Another thing that the Water Department wanted us to look at was a loop system. So whether we provided a second loop out to Main Street here or the other option would come out to Pierre Perry Street over here with a loop connection. So we're in the process--
It's pretty standard. They want those loops done, yeah.
So again, he said it wasn't a requirement, but he said that he preferred, that if we could do that, that would greatly help us. If something happened, we had to shut off the water into our service, and everybody would be dead with water.
Right.
The last meeting we had was with the Sewer Department, and that occurred actually yesterday, where we met with--
John.
John Manini?
Manini, yeah.
From the Sewer Department, and we also met with their consultant, GHD. I can't remember the guy's name, but we met with them. And they basically said that the sewer pump station-- Was that his name? Yeah, Mark Dranville from GHD. Said basically the pump station that's out on East Main Street of Waverly is at capacity or slightly overcapacity, and the pumps are usually running 24/7, he said. So he said, any work that we do, we need to upgrade that station. So we're in the process of evaluating on what those upgrades are going to be, if it's just going to be a new pump, is it a pump and a new wet well? So we're still evaluating that. I don't have an answer for you.
Says a new wet well.
So I don't have an exact answer on what the actual improvements are going to be, but we have someone looking at it and analyzing all the information that we did get from the Sewer Department that provided us what the flows were going to that pump station, the size of the mains, the word, the termination point of that force main was, and stuff like that. So we're evaluating that. And last not least, again, the gym, actually, we did come up with--
Yeah, well, let me just give a quick background. So, well, I guess first, is there questions on the follow-up meetings, or we can get to that after?
Yeah, I'm good. You guys are going through the process of what you need to get done, and I get it. I mean, I could have told you right up front, he was going to require a loop for two inches anyway, and a two-inch line. As far as the sewer, that's just something you're going to have to address.
Just a two-inch line, which is the domestic service to the buildings. We do have an eight-inch line going in, and we have six-inch fire services to each of the buildings for the sprinkler systems, and then the hydrants feed off the eight-inch main that goes through the site. So the one-and-a-half inch was only for domestic service to each of the buildings.
All right, so I think most importantly for discussion tonight is the site plan. So as I mentioned before, you know, we heard a lot of commentary from the board last time about the parking ratio being much lower than preferred and lower than is required by--
Well, there was a few, yeah, there was a few concerns.
Absolutely, absolutely, understood.
The department was clearly one of them, trying to get around those buildings in certain areas. Yeah, I get it. So there's not going to be any deceleration lane on East Main Street, correct?
Correct.
And then you've got that curb cut further down. Talk to me about what we didn't get for the water. What did we get that we didn't get yet on the water company?
Oh, so there's a letter from Tatum Howard, which is apparently the town's, one of the town's consultants on the project. We got this letter through the Water Department.
Correct.
So when we met with the Water Department, they provided this letter that was addressed to Andre, David Condray. And, but I guess our assumption would have been that this letter would have also made its way to the board.
I'm sure he'll do it.
Yeah, usually we get it, but it's vacation, I'm sure it kicked in, and that is that.
Happy to give you a copy here.
In the nutshell, what Dave has--
Age and age, never enough.
Well, again, basically, there was no issues with our project on their water system. There was adequate pressure, we weren't going to take away from water and stuff, and that's all in that letter there. And basically, our model that we did, we use Title V flows, which is super conservative. We're analyzing it at 110 gallons per day. They base their numbers on actual readings for the town of Milford. So I believe their numbers were at about 55 gallons per day per bedroom.
Some of these rate readings that they're doing now, they've got some history on some of these other apartment complexes, so that's helpful to them because we've actually now starting to see some--
That's right.
--readings based on occupancy levels.
Dave always says it's fine.
So talk to me about landscaping.
Why don't we talk about what they're changing the site plan to be?
I haven't seen anything yet.
I know, but that's what he--
Yeah, we're going to introduce that now if you--
Oh, yeah, okay, then go ahead, yeah.
So just a quick background. So when we first put this site under contract, our land seller had been pursuing some additional land on the left side here, a small parcel, about 3/4 of an acre. At the time, when we put the project under control and went to the state for our project eligibility, that land was not under control by our land seller, and so we were kind of on hold on that. After the last meeting, when we heard the commentary about, you know, additional parking or higher parking ratio, went back, spoke with him about that land. We are now pursuing getting that under agreement to include in the project, and so we use that extra piece to help us find some extra parking. So what Paul's going to walk you through is a revised site plan that shows 20 less units, so from 200 units down to 180 units and more parking, so 343 parking spaces, which is about a 1.9 and change parking ratio. So a pretty dramatic difference from where we were last time. So Paul, if you want to flip to the new plan and walk them through that--
I'm going to have a little pullback here, just kind of give you a close-up view of what it is, but I'll show it on the board up top.
This would be with the purchase of a separate parcel on the side?
Correct.
I'll point that out on the bigger plans. Again, as Jay mentioned before, it's kind of everything up towards the north, the state is saying. We still have the three buildings that are four stories each, 48 units in each. What we did was modify, we took a 48-unit building that was four stories and swapped it out to the 56 unit that was there before. So now, and we also dropped a story, so instead of four stories, this is a three-story, 36 unit in the front of the site. And then again, we're looking at purchasing that extra piece, which is a sliver that comes off of East Main Street, and then it kind of comes this little pigtail that comes out to Prairie Street. And that's kind of where we're putting all our extra parking and stuff. As Jay mentioned, now it's 180 units. We do have 343 parking spaces, with a 1.9 versus on the original concept, we had 287 total parking spaces with a 1.43 parking ratio.
How many did you have originally?
287 parking spaces for 200 units.
It was 1.5 or something.
1.4, yes, correct.
Now we're at 180 with 343 for a 1.90 parking ratio. And we reduced the mass of the front building too.
Yeah, Paul mentioned it, but I think, you know, there was some minor discussion about the height of that front building. That building has dropped a story as well.
Where in Prairie Street are you looking to be able to expand this?
Well, we're not, we're not actually, they're just, the parcel, the additional parcel just has a little tail.
Trying to picture where it is. It's right here.
It's basically like the width of a driveway that comes out to Prairie. We're not proposing using that at the moment.
Okay.
That little piece of it, anyway.
I'm trying to picture where it is. I'm down there quite often, I just can't picture it.
At roughly around 16 to 17 feet wide, varies in width and depth.
What's it, just like a-- How big is the entire piece?
About 3/4 of an acre.
3/4 of those. So some of the comments, I want to bring up one comment that caught my eye on the report, was snow stacking. And I'm a little bit nervous about how you're going to handle that. And I get what you're trying to do, but some of the comments on the snow removal. During high precipitation storm events or when snow storage areas reach a maximum capacity, the owner or the operator shall be required to move snow from the premises when safe and practical to do so. Snow shall only be brought to a designated snow farm in accordance with M.A.S.D.E.P. snow removal policy. No snow shall be piled up in any public right-of-way for land not controlled by the owner. What is maximum capacity? That's a very broad--
It is.
That is so broad, that can be here or that can be here.
Sure, so typically we'll designate snow storage areas on the site, right? And if those areas are, if you have a large storm and those areas are clearly being piled up and you can't go any higher and you can't find any other space on site, the property management firm will have a contract in place with the same company, usually the same company that does plowing, and they'll come in and they'll load up the trucks and they'll haul it offsite. We've done it at many of our other properties.
I'm sure you have, and that needs to occur, but when I see the word maximum capacity, that can be-- that could be any different level in any different piece of property.
Sure.
It could be, you know, two front-end load buckets of snow, and then you're pushing it more into it, and then it's 40 feet high.
Right.
And then it turns to ice, and then all of a sudden, some kids can get hurt because they're probably coming down a 40-foot ice snowbank. I don't want anybody getting hurt.
What do we?
All of this is about safety to me and reasonable aspects of what to expect. And maximum capacity has a language that I don't like. So I think we need to actually go back in some history of what you guys have done. I'd like to see where these snow piles or these snow storage areas are going to be to begin with. And I need, I need some type of comfort zone on the height of that particular mound of snow, because, trust me, I've seen it in parking lots, and these things are 50 feet high. And that's just not sensible at all.
Yeah.
So if we can get some type of, I just need some answers concerning that, because again, you get cold weather, that thing turns into an iceberg, and it's, you're not really moving it that well.
We can suggest some language.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
We have run into that before, and we've found language that was acceptable. Now it's for being more specific.
So on the entrance, I'm trying to get that off the plan. Is it 24 feet wide?
24 feet, yes.
So if it's 24 feet wide, does that mean the parking coming right into that parking stuff? And those aisles are, so what do you get to play with? Is it 24 feet wide before you hit the aisles? It looks like it on the plan, but...
It's all 24 feet wide all the way across the entire development.
So I can get, so you can get the fire apparatus trucking can be coming out of there in an emergency, and another trucking comes through there without a problem.
Correct.
I just didn't know if we had to widen that curb cut in the entrance a little bit more. But if it shows that it's, you're conforming to the standard ratios, I'll be okay.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, if I may, so again, as Paul had mentioned, after the meeting with the fire department, there was some requests for some plan revisions. What we wanted to do was introduce the new plan tonight, get feedback, and then they can update, Alan Majerich can update that plan and reissue to the fire department for any future comments.
Did Mark Nelson have any other comments to the negative on this?
Fire Department?
Yeah.
No.
Talk to me about the amenity building. What is planned on there?
Sure. So that amenity building's about 5,000 square feet roughly, give or take. Generally, what will happen in there, that's primarily going to be where our leasing staff will be housed. So they'll, you know, there'll be a full-time staff there on business hours and on the weekends, so...
You're going to have an office in that building?
You're going to have an office in that building, correct. You'll have your community room, what we'll call it, which takes different forms, TVs, lounge areas. We'll have a work-from-home space, and I think most importantly, we'll have a fitness space, which is one of our main amenities that people enjoy at the properties. We'll also have mail and package pickup in that building area, and then you have outdoor amenities for the pool, the building areas, and then more seating as well.
I'd like you to, if I can make a comment, I'd like you to provide an amenity building. I see one handicap spot. I'd like to have another one put on the other side of the building. And you only have one handicap spot enclosed to the building on all three of the back buildings. That's got to change.
No, there's at least two.
I got one back, two, three. Oh, you got them on the ends.
Yes. That's where the main doors are to the buildings. And on Building D here on this modified plan, you're not seeing the handicap spots because kind of disappeared when we're doing all the tweaking around here. But there will definitely be two handicap spots there, so that way you have at least four handicap spaces per building.
Which I assume is the code.
Well, I'm only seeing two. One, two for this building. One, two for this building. One on this plan for this building.
Well, there's two handicap spaces.
Oh, okay, all right, now I'm seeing it. It was so freaking small, I couldn't see it.
If you look at the big man.
Four, five, six.
It starts small, your glasses are getting weaker.
If you want me to bring the bigger plan up?
No, I see it, I see it.
So is D3, D3 is the one close to East Main Street?
This one here, yes.
And this one's showing four floors? This is basically going to shrink down three?
Well, that's going to shrink, because those are the old plans. This is the new modified plans. All those plans that you have in front of you would have to be modified. So the building...
Same building, but it's just going to be lowered down one floor?
Well, it's the same building as these buildings here, because that 56 unit was longer.
Got it.
To get 56 units, it was four stories. Now, we took one of these buildings to knock off the floor. So these are the...
It's got a smaller...
So essentially, it's all a D1?
Yes. It's all a D1, but this one's only three stories. All the other ones are four.
Got it, got it.
So again, once we submit revised plans, incorporating this whole design, all that stuff's going to change. The architectural plan's going to be updated. We'll have to do some more drainage and stuff, because now we've added a bunch of impervious here. We'll look at rerouting water and sewer. And providing a better vehicle movement for the fire department based on the new layout.
On Building, on Building B, D1.
Yeah.
How many feet from the back corner to the back property line? How many feet is back there?
15, maybe, probably 25.
Building B type D1.
To the property line?
Well, to this corner.
You got a 15 yard setback and another, probably another 10 feet to the building.
25?
25 feet, give or take.
Well, that back corner, the property line is way back. It's back here.
Yeah.
So we definitely are within, we comply with the 15-foot setback.
Right. But if you've got that much ground, why didn't you make an effort to get a fire apparatus around there?
Well, we got wetlands through here and stuff like that.
Well, that was my question.
So the wetlands are all through here.
You went as far as you could.
Yeah, we tried to maintain the 25-foot buffer zone to the wetlands and stuff. I know there's a couple places that we do encroach on it. That's what we try to do when we're developing the plan and stuff.
Do you have a comment? Are you doing any wells on here for underground irrigation or anything?
We're not proposing it right now.
So you're not doing any sprinkler heads or any of that stuff, because that'll be prohibited. And you're not going to be able to tie into irrigation?
So irrigation, I saw that you couldn't do any automatic irrigation, not do any?
No, it doesn't allow.
Doesn't allow it. You'd have to do a well for irrigation.
All right, we'll take a look at that.
For landscaping.
If I'm reading this water, everything is based on 45 gallons.
It's got a landscaping plan.
Sorry?
Everything seems to be based on 45 gallons.
Yeah. It's whatever the consultant modeled. Is that it? I think it was 53, wasn't it?
Well, 53, seven months, 45. Because of water restrictions and bans in town and blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Again, that's what they modeled, and they provided, I think, a feet factor in there, too, and stuff.
I think that's pretty conservative. But anyway, I'm waiting for it.
Get them back here next...
There's always going to be variations on water depending on season and that and the other. 45, I think, is low.
I'm surprised through garages, there wasn't any limits.
No.
No, for garages.
We use 110 gallons per day based on Title V flow, so we're super conservative.
Right.
They made that that they had in Milford.
Which is super conservative. These engineers, then this reality. The pool has been changed, too, right? It's been switched to the right.
Yeah, the new layout, they modified the clubhouse. They changed it to the left.
Yeah.
Swapped out the pool.
What, what was the reason to change it up?
Just the way the parking got reconfigured with the additional land, we needed to move it out of the way.
So you eliminated the pool house, per se?
No, the pool house is still there.
How big's the pool house, roughly?
I'd say it's probably 10 by 15 or 15 by 20.
Have you changed out, is your shower's in there or anything?
No, I think it's all for pool equipment, the filtration devices, pumps.
All the pumps, the mechanical?
Correct.
You guys have, you have a grading?
Yes.
Yeah, the grading's in there. She runs...
They added this.
Oh, okay.
It's existing.
How many grilling stations are you proposing, or is those eliminated from this plan?
No, they're on there. There's two.
No fire pits?
There should be fire pits, too.
There'll be a fire pit. It's undefined right now. This is just a sort of...
Funchak, yeah.
Yeah, we can show a little bit more detail in the next iteration.
Is it all electric, heat pumps?
All electric, that's correct.
My God.
We may provide a gas service to the pump.
I just don't get that.
Fire pit.
You're required to do all that heat pumps, right?
Correct. To do energy code.
Energy code, my...
Off all major heat pumps and everything. You doing some kind of guardrails of some sort on the sides? Is that what that is?
retaining walls, and then on top of the retaining wall, we'll have fall protection, whether it's a fence or railing and stuff like that.
Right. It's pretty sharp.
Is there cross details on that in the plan for the retaining wall?
Cross-section.
We have the...
Just a typical standard retaining wall detail.
Just to have our engineer take a look at that, anyway.
But nothing on the fall protection on top of the wall?
Well, it probably shows the fence on top of it and stuff. Again, it's just a standard detail. The wall hasn't been designed. The wall needs to be designed by a structural engineer, and that usually happens through the building permit page.
I don't see a stitch of grass anywhere.
Around each of the buildings, and then obviously, we have a lot of green space out back that we're not building on as well. There you go, that's a better...
So everything that's gray here would be set of grass.
You have a drainage plan?
Yeah, that's the same one, it's a drainage plan, a combination of the two.
I appreciate you bringing in the revised. Have this by email, and can I get this by email, Jerry, at some point?
You can send this electronic copy, could you?
Absolutely.
On these?
I can distribute it, so send it to me.
Help me so I can blow it up. Along with, do we have anything electronic on this?
Oh, yeah. No, you do. I think the original submission was electronic.
But not the revised.
It's a while ago, but I think you've got it. Not the revised, no.
Okay.
Bob, if you get revisions before the next meeting, you know, that you can get them to me, and we can, I can distribute them to the board, and they'll have them expedite things a little bit.
Yeah, so a question. I mean, we certainly could send the new version that we have here, but this is very conceptual, that we want to just show the board tonight. If you'd like, we could develop that a little bit further and send that along prior to the next meeting.
Yeah, I would like that. I would like that, yeah. And with the, with the additional parking, you added, you wrote it down. And here it is.
Additional 56 parking spaces, that's the job.
Yeah, can you, can you identify your, your snow storage areas, too, or your estimated snow storage areas? This area?
283.
283?
Yeah.
Up from the street?
Streets at 277.
So it's running about 283 through here?
It's fairly level. It's just there's some crazy gradients, especially where the drainage is. You got, you got everything kind of coming in.
I think the only spot that we really have drastic grading is kind of at the entrance here. It's four and a half percent coming up to the, then we have kind of a plateau, and then it kind of just goes to the catch faces here. Then the rest of this is relatively flat, because you basically lose almost a foot between each building, just to kind of get the grades to work and stuff. It's kind of all graded the same. You got a catch face, and then at the midpoint of the midpoint, I guess you want to call this like the quarter points on the building that's just raining there and stuff.
I'm talking about the recharge area on the bottom. It's going to be fairly deep at some points.
Oh, you mean the depth of the infiltration system?
Yeah, very deep, yeah.
We're trying to get it on the existing grade that's there and stuff.
I can see the spillways pretty much right where it needs to be.
Can you point to Berenice Street on that site plan?
Berenice Street, that's the paper street. That doesn't, that's really not a golf street or anything.
Is there any houses fronting on that Berenice Street?
I don't believe so, because I don't, I think it's just a raspy block. This house here would be on Prairie Street, and then these houses here are Patsy Lane.
Right, right.
So I don't believe there's anybody fronting on Berenice Street.
That's the area where you're picking up. Just below that is where you're picking up.
Just below, yeah.
Point to the site that you're actually with the excess parking now.
The excess parking would be...
Yeah, okay.
I get a better park for people up there.
You can probably show it on the other plan.
Is that an emergency, would that, you got access to get an emergency out of there from outside?
It's not how we're showing it today. We thought it was too narrow. We haven't...
I know you're not showing it.
Yeah. I don't know, Paul, what the width, the minimum width is to have?
Well, by code, the fire room is supposed to be 20 feet, but if we proposed it to the fire department, that we're providing emergency access, only one way to come in, just in case something happens here that they can't get their truck, and they come in this way, I'm sure the fire department will be more than willing to have that extra road coming in.
Yeah, when you do, when you do the plan and you update the plan, just show that so I can see the width of that area that's coming off of Prairie. Right to the, yeah, right to that street.
Well, we'll definitely do that. Again, it wasn't really shown on these plans, because it wasn't part of the project. Now that we've advanced the project, I didn't reprint our new plan.
So you're, so you're advancing the project with that extra parcel, correct?
Correct. That's what our goal is today, talking about additional parking spaces and the improvements that we're doing.
I assumed that when you gave us the revision, but it is kind of solid.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Well, do you have any questions?
Nope. Doug just said everything, thank you.
You did good.
Anybody else care to be heard? A lot of quiet people in the back room over there.
Oh, it's getting popular.
All right, so you've got follow-ups with the sewer board. When is that scheduled for, do you know?
Well, again, I said, we have our sewer pump consultant looking at the pump station and what the improvements would be. And then once we get an idea of what the costs are, we'll relay it back to the Appugian Wood Partners. They could run their numbers and stuff to see what the, that, the extra work is going to be associated with that pump station, how that's going to affect the bottom line.
Right.
And then we'll provide that to the sewer department, see if that meets what their goals are, if they wanted something different, or, you know, if we specify one pump, but they like a different kind of pump, we can look at that and update those as we pass, the project moves forward and stuff.
Any special comments? Any special accommodations on the fire department to get around these buildings that you need to do?
Nope. Again, like I said, we said provide a figure showing where the fire truck's going to be parked and showing a dash line on where the 250-foot mark would take them. And he said he'll be satisfied with that as long as you show that on a plan and you need okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, this is light on this proposed plan. I really want to see the clarity of these two sectors here about the width and how the fire department can access the back of this building if need be, on both sides, okay? That would be helpful to put that on the plan.
That's what you do though.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
I don't know.
Paul?
No, just, just so you had asked where that strip was, it's right behind Marty's kitchen, pretty much.
Right behind what?
Marty's kitchen, the strip mall.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Right behind it, right behind it.
All right, okay.
I could think it was towards the cemetery, it's this way.
I don't have any further questions at this point. I think we're going to need to plan on a schedule.
You're going to have to, all three of the, all three of them next time. In a sense, you do it at your August meeting, which is, Melissa, when is that?
14.
August 14th.
The planning board?
All three of them.
That week as well?
That should be a good time.
Sure, it'll be a lot of fun.
You know if the planning board's meeting on that Tuesday? Because they were on their vacation schedule?
We don't get it. We don't have a vacation schedule.
Yeah, we should be okay.
Yeah, we should be okay.
Because we only need the planning.
We don't need anything from the planning.
Yeah, we don't need planning boards.
Planning boards out of it now, they're done.
We don't need any. Informations that are going to be scheduled on that 14th?
None come in?
We already have coming in.
We have two that came in, but they already are in front of planning, because it's permitted.
So you have those two and then the 340B is right behind it.
Yeah.
All right, so we, so we're going, that's going to be five hearings that night.
Just like today.
Board members, anybody taking off again?
No.
Why do you always look at me when you ask that question?
Because that's what I worry about, you, Mr. Yanni, all you guys have got these heavy-duty jobs, and you're just going to take off whenever you want. Are you going on vacation?
Yes, but before that.
Oh, before that. So this is what I'm going to do. Let's plan it on the 14th at 6 o'clock, and I'll guarantee you I will not be there.
Okay, so then...
I want to go on vacation.
I don't think so.
Do you want to do it the next week?
No, you do it when I want to.
You got to dump some drives left?
No, you're not.
So it'll be, you guys, what about you guys? Are you on vacation?
Paul is.
Okay.
And he has somebody else from the shop that could go.
I want the traffic guy.
Make sure that he's away.
So you've got someone to fill for you?
Yeah, my boss would be here and stuff.
All right, okay. So you're okay to go on vacation?
I'm fine. In fact, he's got the boss.
I'm sorry?
I do like these changes.
Thank you.
So five, so we have five hearings at night, correct?
Yeah, you got to do the two regular ones and then the next three, these three, yeah.
Okay, so there's nothing anticipated beyond that, as far as you know? So we'll start at 6 o'clock, same time, 6 o'clock, okay? And if you come as...
Well, the other two, you should do the other two, the two regular ones at 6 o'clock and pick these up at 6:30.
Yeah, afterwards.
Want to put this one before the other two?
No, no, no.
Okay, the same order then?
Yeah, we'll do the same order, with the two new ones and then we'll...
We'll get out of notice, short order.
You'll get the timeframe out, but it won't be at 6 o'clock, it'll be similar to...
Hope you like today.
Okay, so we'll continue this hearing till the 14th, August 14th at 6 o'clock? I have a, any other questions? I have a motion to continue till the 14th.
Motion.
Motion by John, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mark Anbar, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
The phone's not unanimous, but thank you, everyone, we appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
And board members, you have a motion to adjourn it for all set?
Motion.
Motion by Mark to adjourn, second by John, all those in favor?
Aye.
Not unanimous. Thank you, everyone, for joining us, continue to enjoy your summer. Goodnight.
Thank you.